It's so great to see you today. My name is Bonnie Loh. I'm the pleasure of service as a president and CEO of Lawrence Chamber at Barnes. We appreciate all of you being here to listen to some very important answers and comments from our candidates. And to the candidates, thank you for that. This is not for the faint of heart. It's a tough job. Many of your fellows did their best. Thank you. I'd like to thank our sponsor, First Management. Thank you very much for sponsoring today's forum. I'm going to turn it over to our moderator, Keith Carter. He's the vice president of external affairs at our chamber. Ian, welcome.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good morning, everybody. I want to echo Bonnie's sentiments. Thank you all so much for being willing to throw your name in a hat here to do this important work. I've been to a couple of forums this season, and the turnout has been kind of dismal. And so I got thinking as to why that is and what excuses there could be for that. My theory is that, one, we had a primary. And so I think we did a pretty good job of studying the candidates and folks making their votes. And maybe a lot of people, due to that, already know who they're voting for, decided to have a show it. We also, as the candidates coming back, are back to doing, I don't know how many, too many forums. So there's that. You all may recall that Board Education Coalition had moved and everybody kind of agreed to stop doing their own individual forums and let's just do a large one, so we were not doing 25 forums. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, all the groups out there just promoted the Board Education Coalition forum, including the chamber, and their attendance was far less than this at the big forum. So it just turns out folks kind of want to come to their own events and get their own questions asked. And so I'm really pleased to see this turnout, though, from the chamber. I think this says a lot about just how important this election is. Very important. I know you all want to hear firsthand and put eyes on candidates as they answer some of these questions. Just quickly, if I could, if you're a member of the board of directors, ex officiel or otherwise, you know mine, just standing right quick so we can see what sort of showing we have. So let's get going. We've got a lot to talk about. Each of you, each of the candidates has received the rules for today's forum in advance, so I'll just do a quick review for you and for the audience's benefit. You'll each have one minute for opening remarks. Our timekeeper is Gary Rice, who is here in the front row. And he will, on anything, maybe 90 seconds, two minutes, whatever the time is, Gary raises his hand at 15 seconds, and then his iPhone alarm will go off at one minute. And then I'll ask you just to, if you're mid-sentence, unlike our current city commission format, we will not just interrupt you. We will let you finish your sentence. A public testimony, it's very abrupt when you're mid-sentence, when that timer goes off, you stop. But anyway, do just finish up your sentence and then we'll move on. Let's see here. We'll rotate the order of questions, and each question, ask them, just not to be ridiculous, or to ask questions yourselves. And then on the microphone, please, just keep it close to you so everybody can hear it well. And we'll try and get to a couple of audience questions, so if you would, there's paper and pens at the tables, and I'm going to have Longgeatius here as you move on. Later on during the forum, he'll gather those questions for me. Like I said, hopefully we'll get to a couple of audience questions before we're done here. So with that, let's begin. For our opening remarks, let's just start with the mic to left here with Brad Finkel.
Thank you very much to you. And I like what he was commenting. This is about all of what we've had for candidate forums. There's a lot, we still have a few more to go, but appreciate you all being here. And I guess as far as opening remarks go, I think many of you know me in the room and happen to have previously served as chair of the chamber and have been pretty involved in many activities around town. People ask me, why am I doing this again? And sometimes I question that, but the real answer is, you know, I got elected four years ago, about four months into it, COVID hit, and lots of things we thought about accomplishing, lots of things I wanted to accomplish in those first four years, you know, did get done. One of those is the development code. One of those is working on a development process, and any other things that you'll hear about throughout this forum today. But just excited to have a chance to kind of finish some of the work we have to do.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, everyone. We were being here to spend in the chamber for giving us this opportunity. Yeah, I have a great relationship with a number of people. As mayor last year, I was pleased to appoint a number of people in this room to board as I've done, and they've done really incredible work. And, you know, Commissioner Finkel is correct, it's an interesting job, a lot of women can do it, but, you know, the satisfaction is when we, you know, complete something that's worthy. For example, last evening, we were able to make a real change in a piece of policy that I think will move the bill on affordable housing. Those things are very satisfying to accomplish. And as Commissioner Finkel, I mentioned, when we came in, we were very excited to get that code change going, and the work was fairly started. And again, I was very proud to put Brad at the helm of that committee. I think he was by far the most qualified person for that of the commission, so I've been very glad to do this work, and I would be very glad to do it again.
Good morning, everybody. My first run for office was in 2017. Can you get to know too many of you then, to be honest? I don't recognize a lot of you at this point, but I have seen some of you through my work as volunteering with different organizations and working with different political operations, like getting the OBS for Prop 1 in 2018, and then working with Paul Davis's campaign. I've also worked with other groups of independent team for six years, learning how their budget works, and being a check president, board of directors for that group, for that organization. And we drew down money from federal and state programs, so I understand how to translate that understanding to our city commission. And just because I didn't get elected doesn't mean I didn't stay active, I didn't stay informed. I continued to watch the advisory board meetings, watch the regular meetings, participate in public engagement groups within the community, not only to let my voice be heard, but to hear the voice of my fellow citizens, and I will continue that should I be elected. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thanks for inviting me to this area. I would like to say that I have a grassroots organization that works with kids that are now with foster care system. I founded that organization in 2008. I'm a newbie to all this stuff, so I'm just, I have a lot of passion about people in general. And what I want to see at Lawrence is more of Lawrence united instead of divided. There's a lot of things I think we could do here at Lawrence and to make everybody here comfortable and happy and satisfied. So I'm all about uniting and equality.
Appreciate you actually to speak here since today, this morning, early. It's not my best time of day, but I hope it's the best time of your day. I'm going to be great here. I really enjoyed the first eight years. I sat on the city commission. It was, it took a lot of energy out of me. One of the reasons I didn't choose to run again is because, you know, the work is hard and it takes a lot of you and your family. After eight years or nine years later, I feel like I've re-energized, I've stayed aware of what's happening in the community, I feel like I know where we have needs, and I feel like my expertise in certain areas can help. I also work and live downtown. Basically, since I'm in the office 12 hours a day, I spend a lot of time downtown, and I see the needs that we have of a community that is in need of housing and of jobs and maybe a new viewpoint on how we want to take care of our downtown that will help forge that future. Thanks.
Thank you all. Amber Sellers was since her regrets today, her primary job took her out of town on business. And since we didn't provide questions in advance, but we are allowing Amber to have a surrogate this morning, Sally's authorized to read her opening and closing statements. So come on, Sally.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Amber Sellers, thank you to Lawrence Chamber for this opportunity. A community must be able to see reflection of themselves in their elected officials. I believe that by elevating the value of representation, we increase opportunities to discover alternative insights to complex issues and develop creative, inclusive policies that move us closer to a more equitable system of governance. The role of the city is to drive economic development discussions and serve as primary partner building framework, strategies, and incentives to be deployed. Incentives that address infrastructure improvements, targeted workforce training, equitable access, and expedited processes are vital to attack the tracking business for the city's economic growth. Moving forward, we must continue leveraging resources on the local, state, and federal levels, sorry, I lost my place, to complete infrastructure improvements and new projects, as well as reimagine a multifaceted commitment to local economic development and prosperity within our entrepreneurial ecosystem.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, let's start off. First question here. In fact, this is a question some of you have heard before. It definitely was part of our last forums, and unfortunately, it's still a question because it is a situation that has yet to be addressed and worsened actually at that. So Lawrence has, still has, a serious shortage of billable lots. The chamber lobbied aggressively against the vague language in Plan 2040 that requires a quote-unquote "community benefit" for annexations. It remains unclear as to exactly what constitutes this benefit. The question is, would you support amending Plan 2040, either eliminate the vague language around "community benefit," or amend it to state that new housing itself is a community benefit? And let's start with Brad Finkel. I'm working with the laptop.
Well, start by saying yes, I support that. Note that Plan 2040 is approved by three bodies, the county commission, the city commission, and the planning commission. In Plan 2040, all three of those bodies have to vote to change. In that way, the planning commission has just the same vote as the city commission and just the same vote as the county commission. So if we wanted to change the community benefit language, it takes all three commissions to vote yes. However, when a zoning request comes to the city, we have the right to define what a community benefit is because it's undefined in the plan. And we at the city have directed staff that housing is a community benefit. And what is now known, the last court words have come to us, we have said as a city commission, that is a community benefit. So we at the city have defined that housing is a community benefit, and will remain that way, I think, as long as, you know, the commission exists, and we'll see what a new commission says in the act. So would I support changing it in Plan 2040? Yes. But more importantly, the question is, will the city commission continue to find it as a community benefit? Because we can't control what the planning commission or the county commission would do on that question, and I'm sure that they always have the same opinion we do.
Thank you. I did clear a couple. I didn't say 60 seconds. Is that what you're going with on this? Sorry, go with 60. Thank you. I'm sorry. You know what? Go ahead. Stick with Maggie for this one. I'll say it. It's kind of not.
Mike, I would say this about, just about anything that people ask, it's a policy issue that they want to get changed. Of course, we can talk about it. Is that the direction that we want to go? And how successful would it be once you change the entire community? Is, of course, an important question. I think I agree that it gives us flexibility where maybe not acknowledging. And, you know, over time, the needs might be very different. We may need land for schools, we may need green space, we may need other things that are enticing, that we can call a community benefit, that are relatively simple or even already a matter of general practice. So certainly, we always have the conversation, and obviously, we've been asked about it since Plan 2040 was enacted, and there's no reason to imagine that the conversation will go away. What matters is that we get out of annexation what other community needs.
Lawrence has a housing shortage. We all know this. So from my position, yes, housing is of community benefit. I know the argument many people have and have had in the last few years is, this doesn't provide any affordable housing, therefore, we should not provide, we shouldn't allow it or should know how it can be built. And if we continue down that path, we're never going to get any housing built, and then even what we have considered affordable now will become even more unaffordable. And so we have to have a mix of low, middle, and income, high-income housing, and this needs to be smattered around the neighborhoods, not one neighborhood of certain kinds of housing, and only certain types of lots, because that does create fragility within these neighborhoods that we are seeing play out right now within our school district. And if we want to be able to have robust neighborhoods that can withstand economic downturns, we need to be able to have that smattering of different housing income levels for all of our different people across this community. And that's why you have any housing as a community benefit going forward. Thank you.
I think it's a benefit for the community as well. And, but what I would like to see is a supply, not just apartment buildings, but houses as well. So focusing on, like I said, all of Lawrence, instead of portions of Lawrence. And then I'd like to be able to find out exactly what the definition is for the housing when you're building a housing. Like, most of the time now, I see that they say "affordable housing," but to me, my opinion, that's a word that they just kind of toss around in order to get something built. So I'd like to have a little bit more definition of what affordable housing is, and in terms of what a person's rent would be as well. So there's a lot that goes into that, so it's pretty broad, but there's a lot of, I have more questions than answers when it comes to that. But yes, we do need more housing.
I think the most recent acquisition of land that the city did work, there was a community benefit, including, was about 100 yards from my house. And I'm glad that the city annexed the land, I'm glad we're going to have new billable lots in the city of Lawrence. Fortunately, part of this plan includes a community benefit, which is a school and a large green space, which is full of old growth trees, which are beautiful and I think are real important to save. That's really covered by another part of our regulatory section in our code. So the community benefit in this area, 100 yards from my home, is a school that is going to be run by another school district. And so for me, it's a benefit to the community, but is it a community benefit? Because we are eventually going to get a school, but it's going to stay vacant until Perry LeConte School District decides to build a school there. So there's really no benefit that we, as a city, can manifest there because we can't make them build. So I think we should focus on community benefits that are actually more tangible, perhaps incentivizing people to build more workforce housing, affordable housing, low-income housing, which has smaller margins, so less likely of, you know, creating real profits. But it's a benefit to the community because we wouldn't have those houses but for this need. And so perhaps we can reclassify the benefit, perhaps we can reclassify what we're going to get. But I think right now, it's undefined, so we need to clear it up.
Thank you. We can pass that back. So we'll start with Courtney on the next one, and Gary, I tweeted, we'll just stay with 90 seconds, so don't ask him, right? Next question is, what do you believe the role of the city is in regards to cultivating existing businesses and attracting new businesses to grow primary jobs?
Well, I think all of our economic development functions are really important, and I actually think there's some, you know, we only have a couple of people working in our economic development department. We could probably be investing a little harder and a little more in the amount of people that are working on that. Obviously, we've had a role in trying to identify industrial space, commercial space. You know, we see things that are moving from commercial or from industrial to residential because it hasn't been used up. There's, you know, there's a number of places where the commission is able to get involved in pushing the needle on those things. But, you know, we're also lucky that the chamber is here to do some of that work. I kind of think we should focus a little more on small business in general. There's certainly, there's some programs in the Small Business Development Center, but it seems like that's what occurred the most from the public, is needing more help and starting new businesses or supporting businesses that are succeeding but not, you know, not quite making the gap. We had a couple of small businesses downtown go out of business this year, which I found very disappointing, and I would rather spend time supporting those.
So as a Native American in this community trying to start a business, my life and I've run into a lot of hurdles. One of the biggest ones being information from the city. Who do we even go to the city to really talk to about this? Is there any updated information from individuals so that we can interact with them? And as a Native American, yeah, it matters. I've talked to someone else who is a person of color. There's a comfort level there in asking questions and feeling that we can trust the answers that are given. And yeah, I know this is a room of mostly white people, but I'm a Native saying it. But the fact that this is a mostly white room, I'm a Native, means I feel uncomfortable going in with you and saying I need help and expecting an honest answer. And it's just a cultural history, not even born properly by many of you in this room, just manner action across America of how other people have treated me and even disrespected me to my face. And so having people of color in as part of your organization is certainly helpful. And again, I stress that if anyone is to interact with our city, so that entrepreneurs who are looking for that help, make sure their information is readily available, not just on the chamber website, but on other sites that they are looking for, such as the city, such as the county, so that these individuals have a variety of sources to go to that they feel they can trust. And I think that's what the city can do, is really, as the city commissioner, hammer in the accountability for this, for our chamber connections, that we are open to everybody in the community.
I would love to see more businesses. I mean, we have a lot of small businesses, but I'm looking at larger businesses, if we can get in here to kind of support our tax base. It seems like every time that something has to be done here, we have the citizens that get taxed to pay for it. So I would like to see more businesses come in, tech businesses or something like on that order, to come into Lawrence and build Lawrence out. And that's, I think, is still a problem that we need to probably kind of get past is, you know, like I said, I like downtown as much as anybody, but you probably go down there more than I do. But I want to see businesses that enter out into the community, not just one section. And like I said, being able to get people that graduated from KU, that maybe have that technology base, to stay here and grow businesses.
So was it, I want to make sure I understand, was it affordability, excuse me, the primary job questions about how to get more primary jobs here, or?
Right. How to cultivate long-standing job growth and interest, and to attract.
Great. So I think that this makes sense. I want to make sure we understand that we can't invite more businesses to Lawrence without places for their people to live. And so I don't want to get the cart before the horse. I'm going to underscore that housing has got to be the first step in this, because even if I want to create a business and invite 50 employees, I'm not sure where they live. And so we have to be realistic about what we have in the market that's available today, and we need to be realistic about what we can attract. I think we have the great tools in place. I think Peace League Tech, the Lawrence School District, the Small Business Development Center, there's lots of tools available for somebody who wants to come to Lawrence, try their hand in a small business, and grow one. And I think there's an environment in Lawrence where people are willing to help people do that. We just need funding, we need enterprise of people who are willing to bring their families and their companies here. And first, we need to have a place for them. I think the first step forward is heading the housing program.
Green, on a couple points. So back when I was chair of the chamber, when we were identifying what was the biggest hurdle, as Mike said, the biggest hurdle at that time was, we didn't have enough tech, we didn't have enough technical training. And so we, with huge leadership and others, you know, created Peace League Tech. And that, you know, was a big step forward. What are our biggest hurdles today? I do agree with Mike that housing is a large hurdle, but I think two other parts, and certainly support the chamber and their economic development arm and their recruiting arm, and I support the strategic plan that has now expanded that some into entrepreneurship. From the city's point of view, we have to do things that the private sector can't do. One is industrial land. We're going to run out of industrial land very quickly, and it's a long process. So in the next four years, we'll be looking for the next industrial park. We need to have the next industrial park. We need to find that land and have it ready. So that's something that private sector can't do on its own, and that, the city county will have to work on that. And the second part of that is, and we'll hopefully get James to talk more about it, is the planning process and the development code, and have a process that invites not only small businesses, changing the way you can work, change the way you can create businesses downtown, how you can create a business, but how we also bring in large businesses, and how we can create a process that's inviting the people who want to come in. We don't do that with the development code changes.
Thank you all. Now, we'll start with Dustin on the next question here. In good kindness order. We've been talking about the need for that industrial park, that next park, for five years here, so hopefully that does make it really eye-up on priority list. This next question, I think just even lead into it just a tad already, but let's go deeper. Residential, or, despite the fact that commercial and industrial property is taxed at a higher rate, residential property taxes make up a disproportionate amount of our current tax, property tax base. Rising home valuations mean that even stagnant middle of rates mean significant tax increases for households. How can Lawrence diversify its tax base and shift more of the burden to commercial and industrial? And what does commercial and industrial development look like to you? 90 seconds.
So I do hear about the need for a new industrial park, and yet, we have two, almost 200 acres unused on land sites still, which we can't use for anything other than industrial land because of the chemical toxicity of the soil. So when we're talking industrial sites, we have that land to use. And when it comes to being able to build up our commercial entities here in this town, this is where I think our development code could certainly be used to, not force, I'm trying to think, ah, encourage, encourage more mixed-use developments along a commercial corridor. That way, more people can live near where they work, near where they shop, near where they can find entertainment, which will then make it easier for them to want to walk nearby, bike nearby, which would then alleviate the stress on our streets, but also allow more people in the small area, which we can get more money out of them for taxes, and also diversify that tax base off of the residential sector, so make it less heavy on our residential sector. And yeah, I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Well, I think I choose to sound like a broken record, but I'd like to see, as far as commercial, bringing in more grocery stores. And like I said, I always focus more, I'll focus on Lawrence as a whole, you know, on the east side also, I think there could be a grocery store as well, also a grocery store in North Lawrence, you know. So everybody can, you know, it's more like you're in an environment that I look at as far as being able to, people be able to look at where they shop at, what their neighborhoods are like, and things like that. But I think that's the most important thing for me, is getting grocery stores in, so people that live far don't have to walk that far. And I always go back to the story, a couple of years ago, when there was a gentleman that walked from 18th and Mass to, and he was going to North Lawrence, he had like seven bags of groceries. And, you know, I gave him a ride. That should not happen to anyone having to do that. He looked like he might have been about 67, 68, maybe my age up. But that should not happen in any community. So those things should be taken care of for sure. So those things should be taken care of for sure.
I like what Dustin was saying about us having some available land at Venture Park. And I think we've always had some land for people to go to, but the question is, is it the right size for the people who want to come and use that land? And I, as commissioner in the past, always thought, well, we got this land, why would we need more? Well, because everybody has different needs and everyone's needs are going to come in different sized lands. And so if we don't have a variety of land for people to look at, then they're just not going to come. And secondarily, we need to have an environment in the city where people want to develop their businesses, where they want to grow their business, where the city's easy to work with, where we have reasonable utility rates, where we have reasonable staff and people to work with at their places, and there's reasonable cost of living for their people. And those are the things we need to focus on right now because our cost of living in Lawrence is too high. We really don't have rates, utility rates against skyrocketing. And we need industrial land users to help pay for some of the infrastructure we put in place over the years. Because the industrial land users do use a lot of our utilities and there's a lot of taxable income we can generate for those people, including all of their workers who come to town. So I guess for us to really focus on things, I don't think land is the primary thing at this point in time. We need to change the environment in our town, we need to make it more affordable. I think we need to make sure we have at least some land available for people to come immediately.
Couple thoughts, one, back though again in a contradictory sort of way, we need more housing in order to attract more commercial, more industrial, even though we're trying to deball that tax base. Second, obviously we talked about the development code and what that can do for us. And I mentioned that, you know, a large part of that is how do we increase commercial space without increasing the cost? As Mike talked about, it is expensive. New industrial park is going to be a cost. It's going to be land acquisition, it's going to be roads, it's going to be expensive. I don't think it will pay off eventually, but it's something we have to think about and invest in. But think about what's going on downtown. We have, you know, the Allen West Building that's been empty forever, Turn Hall, Borders, Lawrence Young World Building, Reuters Building, and an empty lot that's been empty forever. We have six projects in the next year downtown that are going to take empty buildings and turn them into, you know, commercial projects of much greater value without any additional roads, without any additional anything, right? Now, that's really not something the city did, not taking credit for that. What I'm saying is that's how you get increased tax base from commercial. And we need a code that encourages that, that allows redevelopment in this community, commercial employment base and residential, so we can have that go other places.
I think we can take credit for something else, thank you. Because I think that we, in the last four years, and I'm aware that there are people who disagree, that we've been ready to say yes and we want to see creative ideas and we want to see fresh ideas and fresh faces. And we're ready to say yes to their ideas and think of ways to help them succeed. So I think it'd be fair for you, I won't because I can't brag about myself, but you can tip us. One thing, I don't disagree, I think we're all understanding the need for industrial, reasons why and the issues surrounding housing. So I think what I'd like to focus on for a minute is a success, which many people in this room I know have worked around or with or have even had the opportunity to vote on, and that's the K Innovation Park, which I think is just such a brilliant partnership. We are routinely asked by other states how they can mimic that success and those partnerships. And something I'm very excited about is the work that Senator Moran did to work with the FBI and the government to bring cybersecurity campus. I think that would be the fourth phase, unfortunately not the next phase. But I think that's really important and that however of jobs and government jobs will attract other people who want to be here that are all different income types, not just, you know, tech industry or security industry.
Okay. Next question. It is, actually before I do that, Ron Geish, if you've filled out a question, if you would mind just raise that up in the air. Ron's going to go around and collect those. While we finish up here, will, Ron, you can just break those off to me, then if you would. Okay, now next question. It's fair to say that Lawrence is a community with unlimited compassion but with limited resources. Due to the threat of a lawsuit, we're one of the only communities in Kansas to begin allowing camping in our parks and commercial districts. In the past year, point in time data from, I believe it's color of the Housing Authority, I apologize if I mistake that, but that point in time data shows that while communities like Wichita, Manhattan have grown by eight to 12% in their homeless community, even Portland has grown by 20% in the past year, Lawrence has grown unhoused population by 50.5%. Recognizing the need to take care of our own who are experiencing homelessness and want help, what steps can we take now to stem the migration of homeless people to our community? And how do we define or limit the scope of assistance the city can provide? And give two minutes on this one here. And I'm sorry, we'll be starting with Justine.
That's, you know, it's a pretty, pretty broad problem. I feel that as far as the homeless, you know, as in being able to create an area for programs for the homeless. And I don't know, you know, sometimes I'm downtown, I see a couple of people getting off of the bus. So first thing I'd like to know is where they're coming from and who's sending them here. Another thing is that they are people and we have to treat them as such. They have different problems and stuff, just like anybody else does. But as far as our streets and stuff, I think, you know, we have rules and laws that we have to follow. I mean, we have to follow as well as anybody else. So I don't think you're going to allow others to come in and just kind of take over. And I think that's kind of what happened in the beginning, that nobody knew what to do with the homeless individuals. And so you kind of stuck them in one area and thought that problems won't go away, which is not because, like I said, they're people, they like to get out. I had spoke with about six homeless people a couple of weeks ago. And some of them wanted to work, but the thing about it was wrong is that they all have a lot of felonies. Other felonies they had, someone had been on, and lost problems as well. One lady that I talked to in the whole room, she was, she was from Lawrence and she's homeless. And she gets $900 a month from SSI and she still can't find a place to stay. So I think some things like that we need to be looking at. But as far as current population, I think it goes higher than the local. I think it goes more towards state. We're going to have to have some kind of regulations to find out. When people come here or sent here to Lawrence, my idea is that whoever, whatever state sends them should have to pay for sending these people, to send people here. And I actually ask personally, I do have that.
This is probably the most important question I think today is how we resolve this problem, both the problem the community has and understanding how we got here and the problem of the people who don't have a house, don't have nowhere to live and are sleeping in our parks and our mud spaces. I mean, this is a human problem and we need to deal with it humanely. But without any plan, we're not going to get anywhere. And I feel like the first thing I would like to do, probably what I'd like to do is to help formulate a short term plan that's going to go through and count all the people that we have. We have point in time counters once a year, but really people don't know how many people we have. I know that because I go around and count them myself. We need to count the people, we need to figure out where they came from, we need to know what kind of helping, and we need to follow up and continue to push them into some sort of treatment or some permanent housing that they can achieve. Whether that's helping to get a driver's license or get a job, whether it's helping them find a home, whether it's getting into temporary supportive housing, we need to be aggressive and we need to make sure that these people are taken care of so that they don't become somebody else's problem as well. We don't want to kick the can down the road because everyone else is kicking the can to Lawrence because we opened our hearts and our wallets to them. But it's got to stop at this point because we don't have the money, we don't have the funding, and we don't have the space. And I think a lot of us are running out of the heart and the patience to deal with what's going on in this community. So I would aggressively move to start triaging the people that we can, go through mental health evaluations that are not going on right now, push the people whose job it is to outreach these people, make sure they're out of the field, make sure they're out treating these people, make sure the hospital is getting the support that they need to take care of. And make sure we refine our programs and our procedures that are already in place and the people and the policies that are already here to coordinate those efforts. And I think if we do that, we can make a huge step forward and then at least stem the tide with the people that are coming in in the future.
Two minutes is never enough. Say a couple of things. One, you know, we do have a plan. We've been working on a plan. We recall several years ago, the city commission did nothing with homelessness except write a check to go and ask, write a check to OCS. And the homeless problem grew and we said, well, no one else is stepping in to, you know, take this, so we need to take this on. And we have taken it on and we have created a plan with our county, with our partners, and we're in the middle of implementing that plan. That plan includes things that have been making a difference, like the TRC company. We have pallet builders on its way, we have 854 housing units on and on. We have a plan, we're working on that plan. Second, we've called that plan, just as Mike said, we need to do those people all. We now have a by name count, last count, we're 283 names. We know their names, we know where they're from, we know their story. One year ago, we had 12 people or something on that by name list. Now we have 283 and it's growing every day because we had made our partners commit to that, where they hadn't done it before. So we've all taken that step, we're all making that difference. And we now know the people are coming in town. Now, how do you solve the problem of people coming here? That's difficult. We all working with our state legislators on that, working on having that policy, but also working with police chief, police chief, city manager, city manager, county administrator, county administrator, to have those discussions on not bringing them in. Finally, I would say, if you've been watching what's in DePica and if you've been watching what's in Wichita, to say they don't have a camping problem. You know, as of November 1st, for the first time, DePica is allowing camping in some of their areas. They have a problem, Wichita has a problem, Ottawa has a problem. And these are problems that we all have to look as a community fix.
Yeah, I think we're all feeling that, you know, our hospitality has turned hostility. We are not in a sense, say, too bad. I appreciate Commissioner Franklin's outline, a number of the things that we're already doing. And sort of, we're struggling against the narrative that we don't have a plan and it's hard work for people to understand that. As far as strong declared, I think people need to hear me say, and I do say that, residency requirements. When we get our pallet village up, the security and the behavioral expectations in that space will be incredibly high. I think a lot of people will not be able to, will not even want to live up to those expectations. And a lot of people will want that help and they will want all that onsite help, but some people will just not be interested. And they will find somewhere else to go or they will go to the lower barrier or lower barrier shelter. So to me, the pallet village, the most important thing about that is that it gets people out of catching off our trails. That is my absolute number one priority is to get that finished and cleaned up and move back to where we were, where that was one of our best assets, where our green spaces and our trails. So that is my number one priority. It is okay for us to have residency requirements, even in Canada where they have these pallet villages. Canada has infinitely better social services than we will ever have and they have residency requirements. Absolutely do I understand that the taxpayer here has a reasonable expectation that their money is going to take care of their neighbors. If the state of Kansas wants to help us a little better, okay, we can have that conversation. But after we get ourselves lined up and all of the spectrum of gaps that we have addressed, can we talk about that? And yes, I'm very appreciative to our police chief for communicating with these other places. I do not think these are a popular story. Some of the people I have heard from, people being brought here are people I know, trust and have seen with their own eyes. So we absolutely do need to address that in here.
I am a devout Christian. I believe in compassion and also live in the gospel of our Jesus Christ and strictness, obedience to the laws and commandments. And I don't believe everyone else should have to have my value set to understand the concept of big compassion and worship. And in our community, well, I understand, I'm one of those very compassionate people. I've also seen firsthand, I've been the subject of the violence that is starting to creep up by those living outside. And I really want to stop using this term camping because it's not what they're doing. Camping's a temporary thing. People pick up, move on for the day, they're moving in, they're staying in that spot, claiming this public space as their own. And therefore it's going on with our public space problems. And with that, I participated in many of the public input sessions regarding the East Utopia Strategic Housing Plan. I recognize a lot of you that were at those different sessions, sat at the table with a few of you in fact. And you know, it's not perfect, but then room one of the military, when making a plan, no plan survives first contact. And so we have to be flexible, we have to be open minded. But at the same time, I agree, we need to take care of our community members. We can find them, we know who they are, we provide the services for them, provide the breadth of services in conjunction with the county. And part of that, I have, I stand on the Affordable Housing Work Group in support of this strategic housing plan to understand just how broad the strategies are that are being talked about. And even in the Affordable Housing Work Group, we talk about unhoused and permanent housing for people. So it's not that this plan is compartmentalized. We are talking about it across the entire spectrum of housing and services to be provided. And I understand it's going to be difficult, but the big thing is we're focusing on our community members and trying to get services just for them, not just for them, specifically for them, help them become productive, productive members of Lawrence again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll pass the mic to Mike. I should point out Dustin's been standing and they wonder why he's having back issues today. So probably from sitting through too many forms, but. So playing with pain and appreciates you here. Sticking with this theme here in our plan on houselessness, the city recently spent roughly two and a half million dollars to purchase land and develop the pallet village on Michigan Street. Just please share with Dustin, Gary, let's go 60 seconds on this. Please share what you believe to be the pros and cons of this investment and this location.
So I like the idea of the pallet shelters. They're effective tools for moving people out of the open spaces into some sort of housing. They're limited in available, you know, available resources, but with a bed and there's proof over their pallets. That's what the most important part to me. I didn't like where we put it, I didn't like how we did it, I didn't like the lack of community input on the process. I didn't like tearing down perfectly good buildings that had useful life. I didn't like they did it all without talking to the rest of us. And I mean that as a former commissioner, I know how hard it is to do that and I was surprised if they got it done. I understand the sense of urgency and I respect the commissioner's decision on why they did it. But we have plenty of city land we could have put it on, but I would rather have located it at the existing shelter where there's plenty of services available for people. They wouldn't have to ride the bus across town to get to it. And there's lots of other work and learning opportunities for them at that location. I think if we located services in one place, it would be a lot more useful, better use of our resources.
I would start by saying, you know, we do economic development and we do planning condition. We have people coming on down and say, gosh, I love that new Walmart, I love that new pump and box. Just don't put the key, put it someplace else. And the response is from the developers is, well, well, we have only so much land to work with and this is what we have available. All the other places I'd love to put on this, would I like it out at the county side? Yes, but C has no name, county owns that name. If all the other places we look at, yes. Do we have the ability to do some of those? Possibly. We certainly have lots of parks, we could have done something in some of the parks, anyone want the pallet village or park? want the pallet village or park? So obviously I still think it is a good location, is the postal location? Absolutely not, but it is a good location and it's an important part of the plan we are working on.
Yeah, obviously, I do think this is part of our plan, it's really important, I knew what to talk for about. And I apologize Karen, if you're still here. Indeed, we did approach the county to use that land and it was optimal for a number of reasons, and I hope that some more actual conversation can be had between the city and county and use of that land, they have their reasons and you can ask them about it. And I have encouraged many people in this room, in fact, to talk to the county about and why we then if that is their wish for that to be a space that we use. In terms of tearing the building down, one of the things that frankly went wrong with our current shelter is the attitude that you can warehouse people. And that's one of the reasons this shelter is not greatly successful. So the idea that you can keep stuffing people in more than buildings and expect some different behavior or different outcomes is frankly short-sighted. So I definitely still support the change of the taking down that older building and using it in the way that we're going to use it.
I live in Beatty neighborhood. My son lives directly across the street from where the pallet shelter village is being built. And I agree that it is a good place for it to be built. Burn Ash is just down the street. The Lawrence Douglas County Community Health Center is just down the street. Harlem Community Health Center is a mile down the street. If any of these individuals might be younger or have children that they're trying to care for, Panda Pediatrics is about a mile and a half. Community Connections, which takes its place in Beatty, the Beatty School, might be able to work with some of these individuals or be able to help connect services for some of them. So while it's not the best, it is close to a lot of services that the individuals that we hopefully will take advantage of the pallet shelter village will actually be using in our community, which will then help them be more successful. And if people want more services throughout the community, then we have to build them there because right now, Beatty, we are the medical core for this community and that's just how it is. Thank you.
Two and a half million dollars is a whole lot of money. I think probably the pallet shelters work for some, but one thing I have realized that you know with homeless people, you probably don't have some that want to be housed, you don't have some that just wants help, but there are gonna be some also that does not want to be housed, period. That's just the way, that's just the way it is. So look, we have to look at, you know, everyone and talk, I mean, the main thing is talking to them. It's not hard to go out here and talk to, talk to these people. They have needs just like we do. The only thing different with them is that they're homeless and at any given time, anybody could become homeless. So we gotta think on that as well. So but as far as the house and stuff, I think that's one thing that we need to look at but in context, even in context.
Thank you, close track of it. I want to answer again, Mike. Okay, we move to a couple of audience questions here and we will start with Brad. Why is it important to you that minority owned businesses come to Lawrence and thrive here?
I would say, one of those questions you think is so obvious, it's always hard to answer. A community thrives with diversity, a community thrives with variety, a community thrives when we all come together and have those experiences. So very important to me because, you know, people, I mean, Lawrence is a great community, but we can be better. We have not taken advantage of, you know, as Dustin mentioned earlier, we've not taken advantage of our great Native American, you know, many communities don't have that culture. We need to do better there. We need to do better with our African-American community, we need to do better with our Hispanic community to create a community that everyone wants to live in.
Yeah, I was interested in the way that Dustin was characterizing his experience. I want to say the way he did, but you know, I've been here for over 35 years. We are homogenous. And what we lose by not looking out for opportunities for our neighbors who face the kinds of barriers that Dustin was talking about is opportunity to get innovation, opportunity to support people who have great ideas. It might be a genius that would simply not have the support that they need to share their assets with our community. And I think it's okay for us to acknowledge that we have been perhaps somewhat lax in our community. For all the ways we call ourselves progressive, we really aren't doing very much to support our neighbors from different backgrounds and smaller ratio of the communities. And I don't think it hurts us to do that. I think it speaks well to our intentions and to our real concern for our neighbors.
One of the earlier questions asked about how do we ensure more commercial diversity to build the tax base? Having more people of color attracts more business or more people wanting to shop there, not only locally, but from around the region. And maybe even we get some businesses here that become national now. And now people from around the country are like, I'm gonna travel to Lawrence because I wanna shop at that business that only that person could have thought of in that space. And we lose this, or we was saying, a lot of opportunity for people who are intelligent but never see that the opportunity exists for them. And yeah, as a Native American who went through the gifted program, I sometimes think about was I one of those lost potential where I was cruising through every school program on a roll and then got out and didn't see anything, so I got in the army, went and fought Iraq. And now you see kind of part of the results of that long-term with my body. And I've gotta think, how else will I make economic wealth for myself and my family going forward? And I'd love to be able to do that in this community. Thank you.
Yes, the question is, why is it important to you? Sorry, I'm being correct. Why is it important to you that minority owned businesses come to Lawrence and thrive here?
And I kinda have to agree with Dustin on that one, that you, it makes for a better community for sure. And I grew up here and I remember years ago, we used to have all kinds of minority businesses. And I don't know what happened, I have no idea what happened. But it does, the population has to be, I think, the next year for everybody to be able to start understanding each other and what their culture is all about. And I think that makes a lot of difference in the way people communicate with each other, our thought process as well. So I think that's something that we need to have is a lot of minority businesses that if we can, we give the same support that we give anybody else.
Interesting question. I don't really know how the city commission can help move this idea forward, other than as leaders, we can help promote a city and an environment where it's easy to do business, where it's easy to start a business, because as we know, most small businesses fail almost regularly within a year or two. It's very difficult for entrepreneurs to get the capital they need. I think if the city could maybe help set up a small business minority fund, if that's something that they felt was important, that we could do something like that, where we could have community match those kind of funds, where if somebody wants to come in and rent a space, maybe we give them rent subsidies, maybe we give them some sort of tax incentive to start and keep their business here. Because those first couple of years are when businesses can really need and need that kind of help and assistance to stay alive. And I think as a governance, we can help by creating those kind of funds.
Thank you. Final question before we do the closing remarks is an audience question again here. Clean, safe, and convenient are three qualities of any thriving commercial district, whether it be downtown Lawrence, 23rd Street, or anywhere else in the city. What could or should the city be doing now to ensure that these areas are in fact clean, safe, and viable? 60 seconds.
Well, normally when, in fact, we were just talking with downtown Lawrence, we do tend to focus on downtown. I think we've done considerable amount since Commissioner Finkelstadt and I have been here, beginning more police presence downtown. It isn't about intimidating people, it's just about having better relationships with our police and them knowing what's happening for all the businesses to know that there's someone there nearby if they need anything, that they have a relationship with, I think that's really important. I do look forward to some of the work that we need to do, definitely on our downtown master plan, which would include some beautification things. And of course downtown is our most convenient neighborhood, it's exactly the example of a 15 or 20 minute neighborhood where you can live and walk within 20 minutes, it's why we all live in so much. So when we look even at 23rd Street, for example, we need also be a little equitable about how we treat those areas because downtown is not the only neighborhood, it's just the coolest neighborhood.
In my mind, immediately to other parts of the community, not so much downtown, because I feel downtown gets a lot of our attention, a lot of our focus, a lot of the dollars. And as she said, we now have presence controls with our officers, not in front of that intimidating. Did presence controls in Iraq, so I understand the concept well. And I feel like when it comes to cleaning the other parts of our community, that's where we really have to focus, not just on the cleanliness of the buildings, but also our infrastructure. Because if people feel like the sidewalks and the roads are not well-kept, then their conduct kind of falls through and also they're less likely to frequent those areas. I know my wife and I, we kind of, we call them Lawrence's the poples and we kind of go, okay, how many Lawrence's on the way here? And that determines if we're gonna go in this business or not. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, it's just we have a lot of poples and that absolutely impacts where we go shop. And that's so when we talk about cleanliness, security, that's something we have to thank children and mom.
We need to clean up our streets and especially downtown. Downtown is filthy. I'm sorry to say that if you walk downtown and I will not go into a restaurant where I look and they got bees and dirt stuck all around there because that just tells me I know what you're doing inside. So the main thing is clean up 23rd Street. We've got empty buildings on 23rd Street that are dilapidated, that need to be taken care of. We got empty buildings downtown, that's pathetic. We need to, we need to really clean up some things around here. These slants as well, we need to get those buildings refurbished or wherever. Whoever owns these buildings are the ones that need to bring them up to code or be fined.
The end. So I have lots of ideas about how to make downtown better, but I think the rest of Lawrence could use some of these ideas as well. First of all, I think if we could do a better job of maintaining our, the infrastructure in front of our stores, whether they be the streets or the sidewalks, downtown sidewalks and 23rd Street sidewalks, it doesn't matter. We need to make the front door or the main path through our community look the best we can and we need to hold the landlords and the landowners accountable for making sure they're taken care of. If the city can assist in that or we're the ones who are responsible for the repair, then we need to take ownership of that problem and get to it. I think downtown is maybe a microcosm of what we could do. I think alleys are low-hanging fruit, there's tons of opportunity for us to clean up our alleys, to make them useful spaces for our community, for our landlords, for people who live there and wanna work downtown. I think there's opportunities for putting in security cameras all over downtown. Again, it used to be a problem, but not any longer. I think people understand that cameras are a part of life. And then the police presence. I come from a family of police officers in Chicago, B cops. I think being around the people makes them more comfortable where they are and with you as a police officer, and I think it's important for our community to keep that up.
Obviously to our question, how does quality street with any of those answers? You know, I would say, you know, as a city, we talked earlier about the tax burden and there's a, there's a big trade-off for doing tax burden in accomplishing some of these goals. We're spending a lot of money on roads, we're spending a lot of money on infrastructure and we're all in for that. And we've put a lot of money into wages, trying to attract police officers, trying not to lose police officers. You know, Johnson County areas have been raising their police salaries significantly and attracting police officers away. We're losing a lot. It's also a lot, you know, lots of people retiring as well. So we're putting lots of money into that, again, taxes. But anyway, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and I think we just have to keep, you know, working away and trying to find that. Last one is, we talked about a little bit earlier this year, again, taxes, you do more code enforcement, ask people which tab, but code enforcement is tricky to reduce, so.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions as well. We'll bring Sally back up here to start 60 second closing statement with, you'll read Amber's and then just pass the mic.
Boy, Michael, I changed jobs. All right, on behalf of Amber Sellers, it is said that impatience for victory guarantees defeat. Equally, we cannot change what we are unwilling to confront, we must commit to action. Local government must build with and not for the community. This is the basis of co-governments or participatory government. We need elected officials who will move initiatives forward in a way that grows us into a community where we can all live, work, and thrive together. For the last two years, utilizing my public policy knowledge and passion for civic engagement to strengthen our community from within has come with great joy and pain. Through it all, I believe my voice can and will continue to be a catalyst for sophisticated policy development and social change our community needs. Prosperity requires innovative solutions, policy shifts, and breaking down silos to advance meaningful outcomes through all aspects of the community. I would be honored once again to serve as your work city commissioner.
Thank you, you, thank you to the chamber for having us today. Lots of great topics. I've only disappointed that I didn't talk too much about my favorite topic, which is the new development code. So I'm gonna take a second to talk about that and leave you with, the main reason I want to continue serving is to help finish that development code. Some of the folks we say that changing that development code is the most, really the longest lasting impact on this city that will happen in the next few years. It will fundamentally change the way this community looks, how we can attract businesses, you know, how your neighborhoods look, whether or not we have affordable housing, whether or not we have more housing, how does it affect our schools, how does it affect our life? So we're gonna completely rewrite the development code, pay attention to it, be involved in it. It is the most impactful thing that we'll do and I hope you all participate. I hope that you all have three votes, I hope I run it in so I can finish that work.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, keep doing it. I, I, I think it's fair with this group to sort of acknowledge a couple very large ideological divides that have been ongoing in our community for years. What I do that's very different than other commissioners is spend a lot of time listening to other people, particularly the people you might think I don't agree with. I meet with a number of you, mostly for that very reason. I spend a lot of my time and energy looking for people I haven't heard from yet, and I think that's really important. A lot of people don't spend that kind of time, but I think it's very valuable, particularly valuable with a group like this or similar other interest groups who have extreme, you know, the most experience and a kind of perspective that's very necessary and at the same time speak to the us-them divide that definitely exists in our community. So I think my ability to bridge that gap and continue having those conversations to actually reach some kind of agreements between them is the most important thing, certainly I'm focused on that.
As I said before, our first round in 2017, it was a very close race, but then we had to make a decision of be pitiful and just be sorrowful and be mad at the world or actually get up and do something more. And this community matters more to me than my pride, so I'm gonna keep being out here. I have been out here, I've won some, I've lost some, and I'm still here. Some of you I've worked with, some of you I've worked against, and I would hope that you understand that I'm always willing to sit down and argue. I know I don't own everything. Trust me, I know I don't. Trust me, I know I don't know everything. But I'm always willing to sit down and chat and learn your perspective, because it helps me learn more, helps me be informed about how our community is working together on different topics, different subjects, to address these different issues that we all view as concerns. And having spent many years in this community, I know there is people who say me versus them, us versus them, but we're really all asking the same questions, we really are all talking about the same topics. And I'd love to be able to continue to do that for this community. As a city commissioner, as Brad said, I want to freak out, so I'd love to be one of yours. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to everybody for inviting me out today as well. I look at Lawrence, and I look at the people, and that's my main focus, is the people of Lawrence. And I'm really disappointed in Lawrence, as someone who grew up here, to see how Lawrence is going now. I want to see activities in all areas of Lawrence. And being able to do that, being new to this arena, I think I can bring something a little bit different to it, more perspective as well. But I'm here to work for everyone. And, but what I also want is everyone to work with us. I want to hear your thoughts about what you want and what you need, because that's where it's going to get us to where we need to be.
I agree with Justine, this, this job of city commissioner right now, you are elected to serve everyone. Your job is to talk to everyone, your job is to communicate with everyone. And if it's special for you to communicate with people, then you're not a very good city commissioner. And I think it's important everyone knows that you should be able to talk to your commissioner, you should be able to email, you should communicate with them, and they should communicate that to you. And I feel like that's what I'm going to do as a city commissioner. I'm going to go back and forth with you if it's necessary, and I'm going to direct you to where you need to go. But my job is to help herd the cats and try to direct people to the help that they need. And that's one of the greatest parts of the job. One of the things I enjoy the most about serving people is helping them through the problems that they face, dealing with the city, just living in the city. And I really feel like with eighty years' experience, my business experience, and my enthusiasm for housing and the unhoused, is something that really will help cities move forward and implement all these plans that the commissions put forward. Because plans are great, money's great, but action is where the rubber hits the road, and we need to take action. Thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes the forum portion of things. Thank you so much for all being, making yourselves available.